Hi, everybody. Welcome to today's Cthulhu webinar. You are tuning in for day two of the five-day roles and responsibilities of the board and commissioners series, presented by your instructor Cheryl A. Cosley, who's principal of Cheryl A. Cosley and Associates Housing Consulting and Management Services. We're coming to you live on July 8. My name is Brooke Warrenton. I'm the Training and Development Specialist here at the Native Learning Center. We're also happy you could join us for the webinar today. If you could follow along while I read the disclaimer aloud. This webinar provides a summary of fundamental concepts, requirements, and/or procedures within the allotted 90 minutes. The material discussed does not illustrate all possible scenarios that could be applicable. We also have our copyright infringement law printed here. So just a friendly reminder that the webinar materials are protected by copyright, trademark, trade secret, and other intellectual property laws. The recordings from the series, as well as the extensive list of resource items that Cheryl's put together for you to go with the series, can all be found in the courses section, along with the other webinars we've hosted, if you want to check that out. I did put a link to today's presentation slides in the chat for you that's available for download. I'm going to pop that in one more time. There we go. And then if you join for day three, four, and five, of course you will. You'll just log into the system like you did today and click on that green banner to join. We ask that you join with listen-only capabilities, if you remember. It just helps to cut down on audio feedback for the instructor. And then if you find the sound is coming out of a different device than you would like, you can come down to that little telephone icon at the bottom of the screen, click on that, and it'll bring up a list of both your mic and your speaker devices, so that you can select the proper audio output. We do, of course, encourage class participation. We'll primarily use the public chat for that. If you don't yet have it expanded, you can find it up here in the messages panel. If you click on that, it'll open up the public chat between everybody who's on the webinar. Ask your questions, make your comments. If you have any tech support issues, I can try to help you navigate through them. You'll just come down to the box that says send message to public chat. Click there, type what you want to say or ask, and then you can hit enter, or click on the cute little paper airplane button, and that'll submit it in. With Cheryl, most of the questions will probably get answered as she's going through the presentation. So we can kind of save questions to the end, but if you do want to just send it into the chat to make sure that you remember the question, you could send it in. We also have a list of important links in the shared notes section. You can find the link to today's webinar feedback survey, a list to our YouTube archive of all different recorded webinars, things like that. We would love it if you took a moment to test out the public chat now by introducing yourself. You can let us know your name, where you're tuning in from, your work or your role in Indian country that probably led you to the webinar today, and then your tribal affiliation, if you have one. You might be a tribal employee and not have affiliation. That's okay, too. And then just a quick final note while y'all are introducing yourselves in the chat. If you want to avoid being pulled out of the webinar, try to avoid clicking on that red menu panel that's all the way to the left-hand side of the screen. It's just going to take you to whatever you've selected. You can always rejoin by clicking on the green banner once again, but just know that if you click on anything here, it is going to pull you out of the webinar immediately. But while y'all are introducing yourselves, it's with great pleasure that I introduce your webinar instructor Cheryl Cosley. And Cheryl, I have made you presenter now.
There you go. Thank you very, very much, Brooke. Thank you for joining us for day two. This is brought to you courtesy of the Native Learning Center. Welcome and good afternoon. And my name is Cheryl Cosley. My Anishinaabe name is Redbird Woman. I am Loon Clan, and I come from, in my language, Kino Shanconning, which is the place of the Pike. That's the Bay Mills Indian community, who we are located at the top of Michigan, and our waters actually border Canada. We're a Jibwe or Chippewa people, and I served as director of housing for my tribe for over 28 years. During that timeframe, I served with the Great Lakes Indian Housing Association. That's a 31 tribes surrounding the Great Lakes, as their chairperson for seven years. And I served with the National American Indian Housing Council. I started as their secretary and then became the vice chair. I did that for a total of 16 years. And then I served two, two-year terms as chairwoman. I started Cheryl A. Cosley and Associates in March of 2019, and I've been providing training and technical assistance throughout the lower 48 and Alaska. I do it virtually and I do it in person. And I feel very, very blessed that I've been able to continue to help our people. So I hope you learn lots today. My information is at the beginning and the end of the presentation. Should you ever need anything, please feel free to try to reach out to me. So hopefully this will help board members and different staff members also understand the background and history of Nahazda, which is the Native American Housing Assistance and Self-Determination Act. It's going to help develop your knowledge of federal rules and regulations that have to be adhered to when you accept funding from HUD. In our case, it's the Office of Native American Programs, but it is, you know, the Department of Housing and Urban Development. Hopefully this will help you with your role if you serve as a board of commissioners, and you're going to learn those requirements the housing programs need to have in place to run a successful Indian housing program. So these reference materials are really important. One, two, and three is your rules, basically. That's where you find out all of our information. We talked about how to utilize those on the day one, and we need to go to make sure that you're familiar with the CodeTalk website that is offered through HUD. It's on the Native American Programs side, and that's where we gather all of our information. There's quite a bit of information in here that goes and pertains to your A&amp;O policy. That's really important. That's one of the most, you know, important documents that you basically have are policies that you have within. And a lot of guidance, calculating annual income under Nahazda, assisting non-low-income families, the new income limits. There's a lot of information that will go into and help build that particular policy. There's guidance in here for your IHP and your APR when you are building your total development costs, some of the required policies and statements under Nahazda, the insurance requirements. And then we have another page full of them, you know, talking about Board of Commissioners stipends, your self-monitoring. When you do your annual performance report, you're saying that you're going to, you know, take place and make sure that self-monitoring occurs. So there's some plans in here and some templates that'll be very, very helpful. Federal supply sources, environmental review, brand-new guidance. So there's a lot of good stuff in here, and hopefully you'll take the time to, you know, download that. So we're going to talk about our eligible participants. We're going to continue with that today. Our eligible families, families that are non-low income who are eligible, essential families, law enforcement, you know, some of the payments that we charge, flat income adjusted, maximum, minimum rents, your income verifications. And then we'll get into the IHP and GEMS, and that's how we'll finish out today. So hopefully, you know, you can continue to learn something that will help you in your important journey. So our eligible families, assistance for eligible housing activities under Nahazda. I started out yesterday telling you Congress gives us the money to help low-income Native Americans. So that's who they're generally limited to. Low-income Indian families on Indian reservations and other Indian areas. Okay, so if you put it in your IHP that you're going to serve somebody, you know, that becomes your Indian area, basically, but you have to also prove that you are servicing them. Nahazda specifically identifies four types of families that can be assisted. Your low-income, you know, native families. You can assist 10% of non-low-income families that fall between 80 and 100% of median income. If you put that activity in your IHP and you track them, you can assist essential families. You're going to need a policy for that, and the same thing for your law enforcement, and there's certain criteria that they have to meet. So this particular guidance, it's over 10 years old, is the current guidance on that. So when you do help people that are over income, depending, you know, if you're giving them assistance with rehab, if you're giving them low-income rental assistance, you have to charge that person that's between 80 and 100% more than you charge your low-income family. This guidance spells out all of that. It gives you the formulas that you have to use, or you could utilize fair market rent. It talks about your essential families and the steps that you have to take, and when you utilize the ability to house a law enforcement official. So this is the document that you need to become very, very aware of should you be helping anybody that is over 80% of median income. Okay, all of the rules are within this document. So your eligible families, except as provided under paragraphs two and four, so this is coming from the Nahazda statute, with the exception of loan guarantees under a demonstration program under Title VI, assistance for eligible housing activities are supposed to be limited to low-income Native Americans. On our reservations and our other Indian areas, there is an exception, you know. Under paragraph one, you can provide housing and housing assistance for a grant to any family that is not a low-income family to the extent that the secretary approves the activities due to a need for housing of those families that cannot reasonably be met without your Nahazda assistance. So this is coming straight from the statute. The secretary shall establish limits on the amount of assistance that can be provided under the Act for Activities for Families Who Are Not Low Income. So then it goes to speak to those provisions for your essential families and your law enforcement. You can provide housing or housing assistance through affordable housing activities assisted with, you know, grant amounts under the Act in your, on your Indian reservation or other Indian area. If you, as the recipient, determine that the presence of that family within your reservation or Indian area is essential to the well-being of your Indian families, and the need for housing for that family cannot reasonably be met without such assistance. So you need to tailor your A&amp;O policy to address essential families if you're going to help them. And you need to have an essential families policy that lists the criteria that they'll have to meet. Now, law enforcement has its own provisions. You can provide housing or housing assistance to them if they meet the following conditions. The officer has to be employed on a full-time basis. You know, they can be employed by the federal government, the state, county, other unit, a local government, or lawfully-recognized tribal government. And in implementing such full-time employment, they have to be sworn to uphold and make arrests for violations of federal, state, county, or tribal law. And you, as the recipient, need to determine that the presence of that law enforcement officer on your Indian reservation or other Indian area may deter crime. And that has to be in their folder when you house them. They're supposed to be, whenever you help somebody utilizing these provisions, you're supposed to make sure that all of that documentation takes place before you help them, in case they pick that particular file to audit. So your non-low-income family, that's a family who exceeds 80% of median income, but they are lower than 100%. Should you ever decide that you want to help somebody that's over 100% of median income, you need to get HUD permission. They have to have a need that cannot reasonably be met without your assistance. So housing assistance requires HUD approval, and you can read about that under 100106, 1008, and 110. If you plan on utilizing more than 10% of the amount planned for your tribal program year for assistance, or if you want to help somebody with over 100%, you have to get that HUD approval in advance. In cases which HUD approval is not required, you still must determine and document when there is a housing need for your non-low-income families and the need that it, you know, they that need cannot be met without your housing program's assistance. Okay, so how many non-low-income families can you assist? 10% of your block grant can be used for families with that adjusted income between 80 and 100%. As I said, if it's more than that 10%, which you need to track, it's called your 10% authority. Somebody has to be tracking how much you're spending on a yearly basis. If it's more than 10%, HUD approval is required. If the household income is greater than 100% of median, HUD approval is required in advance of, you know, servicing or assisting that family. So non-low-income family in housing assisted under the 37 Housing Act for continued occupancy, you need to address that in your A&amp;O policy. So what this is referring to is you admit this family, let's say it's a family of five. They're income-eligible. You have proof that they're income-eligible when you put them in your program. They do what, you know, all, you know, most tribes, they, they want their, their, their families to succeed. So now they're no longer low-income. You have to make a decision. You have to stick with that decision because it has to be consistent. You know, that's one of the things they judge us on is how fairly we treat our tribal members. If there's no other housing in the area, a lot of tribes will say, we're going to let them stay in our program. We're going to service them, you know, in our low-income units. They bettered themselves, but there's no other place for them to go, you know. And here on this reservation where I come from, that's what it was like for a long, long time. There was no mortgage products. There was no rentals, you know. You don't want to call yourself a game in town, but we were the only option in town, and it's like that, you know. But then I've worked with other places, you know, that are in downtown Shawnee, Oklahoma, or a tribe like that, and there's a lot of other options around. Now, I can't say that the rental structure would be the same, but there is other options out there. Then we have tribes that have built what they call like fair market rents, or they have properties available for the higher-income people, you know. The, the rent structure is different, but at least there's a property available. So you need to decide, or your governing body needs to decide, you know, whether it be the Board of Commissioners or the tribal council who make that decision. Are we going to continue to service our members when they are no longer low-income? If we are, are we going to charge them more? This is basically the only time, except when they're essential or under law enforcement, that they can receive the same amount of help as a low-income family, but it has to be in your policy. You know, how much you're going to service them with. You're going to continue to, you know, charge them that same amount, you know. So you also have to, and somebody, Anthony, I think you have an open mic. You must document a need for that housing that cannot be reasonably met without that block grant assistance. So make sure you put that and address that within your A&amp;O policy, if we're going to help them and if we're going to charge them more, okay? And if you're not going to help them and you're going to ask them to leave your program, try to at least give them 60 to 90 days. It takes a long time to find another place and to get in and, you know, things like that. So you're going to need a policy for your moderate income, as well as your essential families. And some of the things you can build that policy with are examples of required documentation, property inspections, evidence of living in temporary housing. Maybe they're in a hotel, or they're, you know, couch surfing. Verification of that family's income, a rejection letter from, you know, lenders or landlords. I'm sorry, we don't have anything available for you. Letter stating the family doesn't qualify for any other federal, state, or local housing programs. You can build those into that policy. So policy development, your housing organization should have or will need to develop that non-low-income assistance policy and a moderate income checklist. So it, you know, it could look something like this, one, a total of 10% of the grant funds, it tells you what you're going to do there. Some of the criteria that you have to meet, that determination of need, you know, temporary housing or homelessness, a cost burden that they're paying, you know, over a certain amount with your utilities. Determination that that need cannot be met without your housing assistance, you know. Or, you know, sometimes you'll see that the applicant wants to live on the reservation. They want to live with their people, within their community, and that could be built in as one of the reasons. So you, you need to develop that, and perhaps that moderate income checklist, you know. They don't have heating in the household, or cooling, or it's inadequate cooling, or it's pest-infested, or it's a fire hazard, or some of the bathrooms aren't working, incomplete bathrooms, or incomplete kitchens, or, you know, electrical deficiencies, poor plumbing. These are the reasons that you put behind that. Temporary housing, living with relatives, hotels, transitional shelters, they're homeless. That cost burden, their cost exceeds 50% of their adjusted gross income, which would include their utilities. They have an accessibility to financing. They have poor credit. Those were the, some of the things that I, I used to argue when I was with the National American Indian Housing Council. Well, you know, have them go in and get a mortgage product. Well, you know, through, sometimes no fault of our own, our, our people, you know, sometimes it's all our fault. Sometimes it's not, that there's poor credit, whether it be a result of Indian health paying their bills slowly or not at all, and our tribal members getting bad credit as a result of that. One of the things that used to really pull my chain, I guess you would say, is in order to get help with energy assistance, the LEAP programs and things like that, it would require our people to get a shut-off. You know, that's the last thing we want to do is put them in that kind of credit danger in order to qualify for a program. So, you know, documentation, you know, rent receipts, rejection letters, denial letters. So you build your policy so you can prove that they need your assistance. And as I said, if they're over 100% or you want to exceed that 10% authority, you need to obtain HUD approval ahead of time. So an essential family, they can receive assistance if the family's housing need cannot be met without your block grant assistance. That's what that policy is going to be for. And you determine that that non-low-income family's presence is essential to the well-being of your Indian families living on your reservation or your Indian area. I wouldn't recommend that you have them say, I'm an essential person. You know, I've seen people put that right on their application, and normally that's not where it goes. You deem them essential. Make sure your essential policy talks about who can do that. I could do that as the executive director. I've seen other places where only the Board of Commissioners can make that decision, that, you know, a family is essential to the community. And I have seen places where only the tribal council can make that determination. Always leave a way to deem them non-essential within your policy also. So that PIH notice that I talked to at the, the beginning of the class, 2014-02, that deals with all of the regulations for essential families. You, as a recipient, have to determine that family is essential to the well-being of your families residing within your Indian area. Your criteria, your rationale for determining if they're essential should be described within your policy. Documentation has to be maintained. That clearly supports that documentation. You must make a determination about each essential family, document your determination, even in cases when HUD approval is not required. You have to have that in that file. What happens is your auditor and HUD during a monitoring visit, they'll come in and they either take 10 files randomly, or 10% of the total files, and they randomly select them, and they will check, were they income-eligible when they put them in there? Did they meet all the criteria for the program that they're in? Did the housing get all of the documentation that they were supposed to have? You know, so that, you got to make sure that you have that upfront. So you need also, like I said, an essential families policy. And it, and it kind of mirrors that moderate one. It's going to have some of the same things. The documentation, the determinations, that their rent burden, the determination of need, inadequate housing, what type of documentation you're going to use, how you documented it. Did you go do inspections? Did you look at rent receipts? Did you look at denial letters? And then your requirements, you know, what do you consider essential? Well, I used to consider medical doctors as essential to the community. If you can't get a doctor here and you have a clinic, then, you know, they got to have someplace to stay. In this area right now, we build essential housing, this tribe does now. We got to that point because of our clinics and our other areas, and we're 20 to 25 miles, depending on where you're at, from the Sulocks, which is a huge, like, three- and four-year project. And there is nothing to be had for rental units. Those guys are renting everything for, from a 50 to 75-mile radius, and they even bought homes. Any home that goes up for sale, they end up buying them. So we have that type of a situation here. So the tribe started actually building a central family housing for our doctors, our dentists, and, and things like that, so they can continue to service our, our community. They don't have a place to live. They're not going to want to come here. So make sure you put some type of wording in there, essential families will be requested to leave the program when deemed no longer essential. The reason I say this, you put a dentist in there, the tribe 20, 25 miles away hires them, gives them more money, but they want to stay at your place because you've got nicer housing. You know, sorry, buddy, you were essential when you were here as our dentist. Being their dentist, you're no longer essential. Hope you like your housing, you know? So, you know, that happens. It's a real-world thing. So make sure you have a good essential families policy. So you also have to track that 10% authority. So you put in your IHP that we'd like to utilize 10% of our funds to help our tribal members that fall between 80 and 100% of median income, and then you track that 10% authority. Now, this is only if your governing body wants to help 10%. They might just say, we want to spend our money. We don't get enough just on our low-income people. So that's another discussion that you have to have. Recipient is assisting a non-low-income family with rental assistance. They decided to use the monthly fair market rent of $698 as the rental value for the assistance. You know, times 12 is $8,376. So this is a really small tribe. They get $365,000 a year, okay? Their 10% authority would be, you know, $36,500. So they have a second family. They're helping them with homeownership assistance, $850 a month, times 12 is $10,200 of that authority. Third family comes in, they're helping them with down payment assistance. The assistance being provided is $7,400, okay? When you have an over-income family, and it all goes back to that, that document that we talked about at the top of the class, you're not allowed to provide them with the same amount of assistance as you do a low-income family. So, and, and that, we have a lot of slippage in Indian country about this also. We give $10,000 in down payment assistance. Well, if that family is not low-income, they don't qualify for a full $10,000, and you have to do a formula to find out how much they qualify for. In this particular instance, they qualified for $7,400 of that $10,000 because they can't receive the same amount of assistance. So that comes out to $25,976 for the three families that you're helping. The fourth family comes in, and they need $5,000 worth of assistance. Well, you don't quite have that, so you would have to contact your HUD office and say, we have another, you know, family coming in. We're, you know, $24 short. May we assist them? And they'll give you a yea or a nay for the expenditure of the rest of those funds for that next family. But if you ever exceed that 10%, you have to let them know. So you have to track that authority. So the summary of the requirements for serving your non-low-income families. If they're an essential family, they do not require any HUD approval, okay? You don't need to charge them more if they are not low-income, okay? And they don't count against that 10% authority. Same thing if it's a law enforcement family, okay? Continued occupancy. Uh, continued occupancy, they were income eligible when they moved in, you don't need HUD approval. Are you gonna charge them differently? It depends on what it says in your policy. But you be prepared to charge everybody more. You can't just charge one family more and a different family, no, um, it's one or all. Um, and it does not count against your ten percent authority either. So your non-low income families, that ten percent authority between eighty and a hundred percent of income, you don't need HUD approval, you do need to charge them more, and they do count against your ten percent authority. If you're exceeding ten percent, same thing, you need HUD approval. Now you, now you need HUD approval upfront, you do need to charge them more, and they've exceeded the ten percent cap, okay? Whenever you help anybody over a hundred percent of, you know, income, um, you're supposed to get HUD approval. Um, if they're under your ten percent authority, okay? Uh, I'm gonna give you a heads up, they don't really consider tribal council and board members, um, essential. Okay? So, policy required decisions, the ten percent on cap is assistance for your families between eighty and a hundred percent, does not include families that are initially low income, but later experience an increase in income. You have to address that in your policy. Your tribal decision has to be in there, are you gonna continue to service them? If you are, are you gonna charge them more than your low-income participants? This is the only time where you don't have to really, you know, charge them differently. Um, you can charge them the current amount they're paying, you can charge them a fair market rent, or you can utilize that HUD formula, um, that is laid out within that guidance. But you make sure you detail your decisions in your policy. Your rents, including homebuyer payments under a lease purchase agreement to be paid by a non-low income family, cannot be less than what you're charging your families that are eighty percent or less of median income. Okay, but it need not exceed the fair market or the value of that particular unit. You determine in your policy if you're gonna use your HUD formula, or you're gonna use your Fed fair market rent. Now here, you can charge fair market for one program, and you can use the HUD formula for a different one, okay? Those are programs, within a program, you have to use the same thing. You can't charge one tribal member fair market and use the formula on somebody else, okay? But for different programs that you offer, one can be fair market, one can be the formula. Generally, your fair market value is higher than what that formula works out to be. So to calculate the rental payment of a non-low income family, you divide their income by eighty percent of median income. Multiply that number by the amount of monthly rent for your low-income family, this amount is a minimum monthly payment, the procedure should be addressed in your policy. Your thirty percent rule, you know, I've told you over and over and over again, you can't charge somebody over thirty percent of their adjusted income. You can't charge a low-income person over thirty percent. You can and sometimes must when they're over eighty percent, okay? So calculating it, we're gonna, we're gonna use a test family here. Eighty percent of the median income for a family of four in Seattle, seventy-five thousand forty dollars. The rental payment for a family at eighty percent of median, median income is twelve hundred a month. The fair market for a three-bedroom is seventeen hundred and ninety-three dollars a month. Your non-low income native family of four is making eighty-eight thousand, you know, compared to that seventy-five forty. So you take your income of your non-low income family, eighty-eight thousand, you divide that by the income of your low-income family, they're making seventy-five thousand forty. That comes out to one point one seven. You multiply that times the low-income rent, the rent at eighty percent of median income is twelve hundred dollars. So your rent for your non-low income family will be fourteen hundred and four dollars using the HUD formula calculation. Or if you decided that you're gonna charge everybody the fair market rent, you would charge that family seventeen hundred and ninety-three dollars. You just have to be consistent, we're gonna charge everybody fair market, or we're gonna run the formula on everybody. And this is all spelled out, how to do this within that guidance document, okay? So, the rent including homebuyer payments under a lease purchase agreement to be paid by a non-low income family can't be less than what you charge that non-low income person at eighty percent or less of median income. Um, it need not exceed the fair market rent or the value of the unit. Now, when it gets to other programs that you offer, other Nahazda assistance, down payment assistance, rehab, things like that, you actually have to kinda calculate that differently. So eighty percent again of a family of four in Seattle is seventy-five thousand forty dollars for that median income. This tribe caps their down payment assistance at ten thousand dollars for a family that is at eighty percent or lower. So you take the income of your low-income family at seventy-five thousand forty, you divide it by the income of your non-low income family at eighty-eight thousand dollars. That comes out to point eighty-five. Take the point eighty-five times the ten thousand, which is the max that we're giving out in rehab, in your non-low income family would only qualify for eight thousand five hundred. And there's where we get a lot of slippage. They, they forget that just because they're higher income, they can't, you know, the max we give is ten thousand, so they're just used to writing checks for ten thousand dollars. No, if they're over eighty percent, you have to a- adjust the amount that they receive. Okay, so don't make that mistake, cuz you'll get in trouble. So how long does HUD have to review and act on a proposal to provide assistance to a non-low income family? Or a, a model housing activity? So whether you put it in your I H P right from the get-go when your I H P is due, or you can put in any model activity, anything like that, anytime that you want. So you can put in another I H P amendment, that's what they call that. So they have sixty calendar days after receiving the proposal, um, to notify the recipient in writing that that proposal to provide assistance to your non-low income family or for model activities is approved or disapproved. If no decision is made by HUD within sixty calendar days of receiving the proposal, the proposal is deemed to have been approved by HUD. Now, this was language that was inserted when they were writing the regulations to make sure that they just didn't leave us sitting on a shelf, some of those requests. So if you plan on using this allowability, I guess you would say, you need to have proof that they received it, so, um, get proof of receipt that they got your, you know, I H P, or if you send it through the mail, get a return, you know, um, so you can clock or, or start that clock ticking for the sixty calendar days, okay? So law enforcement, the, the provision for assisting your law enforcement, that falls under the Nahazda statute itself. Uh, it specifically addresses a provision for housing or housing assistance to law enforcement officers on an Indian reservation or Indian area. Okay, they have certain criteria that they have to meet, you know? Can't be a dog catcher, it has to be somebody with an arresting power, okay? Um, officer has to be employed full-time, can't be part-time. They can be federal, state, county, tribal, other unit of local government, sworn to uphold and make arrest, okay, for violations of federal, state, county, or tribal law. In addition, the program must determine the presence of that law enforcement officer may deter crime, okay? We put law enforcement all over this reservation. Uh, we built a hundred-unit project with three great big arms, separate big circles with a big playground in the middle here. There's a state police officer next door to me, we, we put eighty Nahazda units, basically. Well, they weren't Nahazda units, they were built with Nahazda funds. Um, and then we had twenty, I had ready with water and sewer that we started putting mortgage products. So I've got a mortgage house right in the middle, we got like twenty more of them in here, um. And there's law enforcement everywhere. All we would ask is, please, please keep those cruisers out where they can see them. So you break a corner and you see a state police vehicle. You know, you go a little bit farther and you see, you know, fish and wildlife, you cut another corner and there's a sheriff vehicle. Um, it is a big deterrent to crime. You have to, you know, make that determination, tell them that that's one of the things that we asked for, or, you know, whatever reasoning that you have, you know, you could ask them to do increased patrols, things like that. Um, but you determine that the presence of that law enforcement officer can deter crime, and you can help them under this provision. And that's, you know, found within Nahazda and it's outlined within that document. So our eligible families, you can set preferences for tribal members and other Indian families. Your Indian housing plan for the tribe, you know, can require preferences for housing or housing assistance provided through your activities, you know, um, to members of your tribe, other Indian families, um. If you want to provide preferences under that paragraph, the recipient shall ensure that the housing activities are assisted with your grant amounts. Um, under the Act for Such Tribe are subject to those preferences. So there are exemptions because of the way that we receive our money. We receive our money on the behalf of low-income Native American people. So Title Six of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four, Title Eight of the Civil Rights Act of sixty-eight shall not apply to actions by federally recognized tribes and tribally designated housing entities of those tribes under this Act. Because we get the money to service Native Americans, so. You can get a finding for helping a non-native family, unless you've helped them under the essential provision or the law enforcement. Um, you're supposed to be providing housing to low-income Native Americans, okay? That's why we receive the money. So you can select preferences in your selection. Um, the regulations at one thousand one twenty permits you as a recipient to provide preferences to Indian families who are members of the Indian tribe or other Indian families. Um, if you're, as a recipient, have adopted the preference in your admission and occupancy policy, you ensure that the housing activities funded under Nahazda are subject to those preferences. So there's a difference between a preference and a priority, you know, um, and, and sometimes, you know, your preference could be, we're gonna house any Bay Mills member first. We will house anybody, um, with a Bay Mills child second, you know? You can set them like that, you know, your priorities. Well, if I'm building a project for my elderly, my priorities are gonna be my elders. I could set a preference for a veteran, you know, but follow whatever preferences and priorities, weigh them, you know, carefully, they can be different ones for different projects. You know, eh, eh, we, there used to be set language, you know? People that are affected by a natural disaster. Well, you might want that as one of your preferences, but it doesn't need to be there anymore. That's up to you as a governing body to set your own preferences and priorities for your particular tribe. This is where I live, by the way, right in the middle there. It's beautiful, this time of year, that's what it looks like, but. So there's, this module has various examples about some of those required tribal decisions that you have to make. Yesterday, we talked about those policies and how important it is that you guys are reviewing your policies on a yearly basis. Making sure that they're updated, making sure that they're compliant. These are some of the components that you have to make sure are within the policy. Are you gonna charge a minimum or a maximum rent? Bottom line, unless they fall between eighty and a hundred percent of median income, you cannot charge them over thirty percent of their adjusted income. And if you get caught doing it, even inadvertently, you will have to pay them back. And I've seen cases where they didn't recertify people and they made them go backwards years. It's usually a two-year, a current year and the two prior years, so a three-year period when they come in and they look at things. Um, but you can get in trouble for that. Um, that's why it's really important, we, you know, your boots are in every housing unit that you have once a year, and that you recertify them, even if they are at max rent. That's where you see another area slippage, you're supposed to still recertify them because of the fact that what happens if they lose a job? What happens if they've got deductions in there that brings them underneath, you know, um? It, it'll be a very quick process if they're still over income. You, you can, it doesn't take long to recert somebody, but you can't just blanketly say, no, they're at the max rent, so we don't need to recertify them. Yes, you do, you need to prove that you're not charging them more, um, than what they're, um, that thirty percent of median income. So make sure that, um, you don't do that, you have to verify that income. Make sure that, you know, I used to sit down with them, and, and when I teach A and O classes, you know, I, I tell them, you should be having a conversation with them when they become an elder. When their, you know, children move out. If somebody moves in, if you get a job, if you lose a job, if you get retirement, you know, um, you have a baby. You get divorced, you lose a spouse, all of that is gonna affect that, that rent structure. Um, so you gotta be real careful with that, okay? You can't even inadvertently charge them, you know, um, the wrong amount. So your payment's charged, can you have a maximum and a minimum rent? Well, yeah, you can, but you still have to run that calculation to make sure that you're not exceeding thirty percent of the adjusted income of that family, unless they're over eighty percent of median income, okay? Um, so that minimum rent, you know, you could do it, but you still have to run that calculation. Can you charge a flat or an income-adjusted rent? Well, yeah, as long as it doesn't exceed thirty percent of the family's adjusted income. And this is coming straight from the regulations, okay? So one twenty-eight, is income verification required for assistance? Yes, you must verify the family is income-eligible based on anticipated annual income. Your family is required to provide documentation to verify this, uh, determination. Make sure you put in your A and O policy that if they refuse to do verifications in a timely manner and inspections in a timely manner, that you may evict them, okay? You have to make sure this is done, you'll get in trouble. So that's why you make sure that that language is in there. Um, your recipient is required to maintain documentation on which the determination of eligibility is based. So as I told you yesterday, I got a finding for somebody that moved in ten years before I took the job, but they were still there, and they pulled that random file, and that family didn't have proof that they were income-eligible when they were put into that household, so I got a finding. If you do your own self-monitoring, you could check out your own files. And, and I tell them that, you know, check them. And if you found out that that's not there, put a big old red flag on there and say, we found this, we discovered this during self-monitoring. Um, that they might not have been income-eligible when we allowed them in there, that we have no, you know, method to find that out at this point. How did we fix it? We took an A and O class, and then hopefully if they should randomly pick that file, you've answered enough where you won't get a finding for it. So you as a recipient can require a family to periodically verify income and in order to determine housing payments, continued occupancy, consisted with your locally adopted policies. When income verification is required, that family has to provide documentation which verifies the income, and it must be retained by you as the recipient. You can charge a non-low income family more than thirty percent of the family's adjusted income once they hit that eighty percent mark. Another thing that a lot of our, I had to call and ask, um, like I said, you're, you're continuously learning in this job, even thirty years later, you know, thirty-five years later. If you have a low-income person, you can't charge them over thirty percent of their median income. And they fall backwards on their rent, and you go and you put them into, uh, on a collections agreement, a payback agreement. You don't have to count the payback agreement in that thirty percent figure, okay? But the rent itself can't be over thirty percent of the income. Okay, that's just something that might be helpful to you someday. So utilities. It used to be required under the nineteen thirty-seven Housing Act that we charged or were given. It used to be required under the nineteen thirty-seven Housing Act that we charged or were giving utility allowances. Now it's up to you to decide when you build a project, if you're gonna include a utility allowance. It costs your program a lot, a lot of money. I, I show them in, in some of my classes, you know, how you figure out what your rent rules and how much it's gonna cost you out of your future subsidies. Cause you never collect a hundred percent of your tenant account receivables. They call them a T A R. You have to be actively, a, a, as a board of commissioner, you guys, you gotta collect your monies. The minute they find out that you're not evicting people, everybody will quit paying. And then you'll never be able to build anything, you won't be able to service anything. There, it's really important that you do that. So utilities have to be considered part of the rent and the homebuyer payment under the nineteen thirty-seven Act. Now they don't. It's up to you to define rent and homebuyer payment. You know, you can exclude utilities now. And, and you look at it, even a hundred dollars will charge, you know, cost you a lot of money, depending on how many units you're building. So the insurance component is another area where we have a lot of slippage. The recipient shall provide adequate insurance either by purchasing insurance or indemnification against casualty loss. By providing insurance in adequate amounts to indemnify the recipient against loss from fire and weather and liability claims for all your housing units, okay? You shall not require insurance on units assisted by grants to families for privately-owned housing if you have no risk or loss of exposure. Or if the assistance isn't an amount less than five thousand dollars. What does that mean? Well, we're gonna get into by the end of this useful life. Useful life and insurance go hand in hand. And normally, you require proof of insurance that goes hand in hand with the useful life. Over five thousand dollars, they're supposed to have insurance, okay? I would read the guidelines on, on that here. And also remember that you're gonna provide as a housing entity, the structure insurance. You should encourage your tribal members to purchase contents insurance, renters insurance, to protect their belongings. So the recipient shall require contractors and subcontractors to provide insurance for their activities or negotiate adequate indemnification. And these are all in addition to any applicable flood insurance requirements that are found at one thousand thirty-eight. So what constitutes adequate insurance? It's adequate if it's purchased insurance policy from an insurance provider or a plan of self-insurance in an amount that will protect the financial stability of your block grant program. You can purchase the required insurance without regard to competitive selection procedures from nonprofit insurance entities which are owned and controlled by recipients and which have been approved, approved by HUD. What does that mean? AMRIND is an organization that is owned by the tribes that purchase insurance through them. Bay Mills is a member of AMRIND. If you're not getting your insurance through AMRIND, then you have to be following your procurement and you should be getting three bids on it, a minimum of three bids on your insurance carrier, okay? If it is AMRIND, then you don't have to do the bidding. Can you use grant funds to purchase insurance for privately-owned housing? Well, yes, you can. But remember, you need to be fair. You can't require one tribal member to get insurance and then purchase it for another one. So you're basically opening Pandora's box. If you're gonna provide insurance, you should be providing it for all of your tribal members and that's gonna cost your program, okay? All purchases of insurance have to be in accordance with one thousand one thirty-six through one thirty-eight, so you can read about that more in the regs. For those of you that weren't here yesterday, the regulations are found. The Nahazda statute is reference material one. The, the regulations at one thousand is two and two hundred. Uniform guidance is reference material number three, okay? So that insurance program guidance goes back to two thousand fourteen oh three, that is also in your reference materials. The intent of the guidance is to provide recipients with discretion of when insurance is required, what requirements apply, what is adequate, what insurance requirements apply to contractors and subcontractors and what other insurance requirements are there under Nahazda? And when is insurance required and in what amount? So your insurance coverage is required for housing units owned, operated and assisted with your block grant funds. Adequate insurance is an insurance in an amount that's gonna protect your financial stability of your block grant program. It means that the housing units, privately-owned housing units that you assist with your block grant funds have to be adequately insured for one of the two time periods that they list below. So it's the useful life or the affordability period of the recipient of the privately-owned, you know, unit or the term of repayment or forgiveness agreement for all or part of the block grant assistance or privately-owned housing units. So HUD has this rule basically, or thought, or, or if you can buy insurance on something, you should. Because if you don't carry insurance on it, they're not really gonna wanna pay with Nahazda funds to replace that, because it should have been insured, okay? Housing units assisted with block grant funds must remain affordable for their useful life as determined by the recipient. That affordability period, you list that in your I H P. Recipients have to have means of insuring their investment during that period. Therefore, as long as the useful life or affordability period has not expired, your I H B G assisted housing units owned or operated by the recipient must be covered by adequate insurance, okay? So that's the guidance about that. You should have your private homeowners provide proof of replacement insurance for the useful life or affordability period. Or you can purchase insurance for privately-owned housing units in the amount of the outstanding balance of the assistance provided. So when the housing units not have to be insured? In the guidance, the example, three thousand five hundred emergency assistance to a private homeowner, it's not subject to a repayment agreement because it's less than five thousand. That, in that case, no insurance requirements would apply. Their second example is if the recipient provides twenty-five thousand in down payment assistance to a private homeowner, which includes a mandatory ten-year useful life or affordability period, the property and the five-year repayment clause, the insurance requirement described would apply for ten years from the date that you actually provided that assistance to your recipient. So this is sample insurance policy language. Housing funds shall not be spent on acquisition, construction, rehab of any home or parcel of land not insured against casualty, fire and flood if necessary. Any home in a flood plain as designated by your tribe's environmental resource staff or whoever makes that determination on behalf of your tribe, shall be adequately covered for flood damage, destruction to the home. The foregoing requirement shall commence at the time housing funds are first spent, shall continue the entire time in which the housing entity has a financial interest in a home or a parcel of land as applicable. If your participant is in a program such as rental assistance, student temporary housing, emergency assistance, they haven't exercised an option of purchase under your lease-to-own program, they would not be required to insure the housing unit. Okay, you as the recipient would be insuring that structure, okay? Nonetheless, the housing entity shall encourage the participant who rent to procure renters insurance. Your housing entity shall be named as the last payee under all required insurance policies for the period of the conditional grant under a program or until that conditional grant obligation is satisfied. The participant shall provide the housing entity with certificates of insurance evidencing the required insurance. So hopefully, those of you that are with me now will be here Friday. And I know Friday's a bad day for training. But I'm going to show you in the last part of that class some of the things that HUD looks for during their monitoring. And insurance is a huge component of that and that'll show you. You know, A, B, C and D, this is what they're gonna look for, okay? So stay tuned and try to come. So policy requirements, what's your purpose of your written policies? What is your policies versus your procedures? And what are the Nahazda policy requirements? So those of you who are board of commissioners, you know, it's an honor and it's a responsibility. Tribal council, board of commissioners, you're expected to serve as role models to your community and the tribal members that you serve. You should strive to make sure that your governing decisions, you know, you need to be in full compliance, okay? Should you be a participant in any of these programs? Should you be an occupant in one of these? Make sure that you're compliant with your lease and all the rules and regulations of your housing entity, should you also be that tenant, okay? This is the part where it's really important. It's vitally important regarding any tenant account receivables, T A Rs, okay? You're gonna be the grievance committee in the majority of cases. You do not wanna bring a tribal member in front of your board for not paying money, possibly having to evict them and have them look around the table and say, hey, three or four of your tenants, do any of you owe money? Because of that decision, I served under my tribal council and my staff members were all required to have payroll deductions. They could not fall behind on payments. Why? They had to be the examples. You, you can't put the rest of your board members or your program at risk because you're not living up to your obligations as a tenant. So if you stand up and you become a tribal council member, or you become a board of commissioner, or you're a staff member, in all three cases, you should not have a receivable with the housing entity and you should be in full compliance with your lease. That means your yard, the junk cars, all of the rules that apply. Because you're the one that they're gonna have to look up to and you're the one that's gonna have to be there for those hearings. And I know you might not wanna hear that, but that's, you know, the reality of Indian housing and, and what we need to do. So it's vitally important regarding tenant account receivables, so you're gonna service the grievance committee. It puts your board, the rest of your board members in a really bad light and the housing program. Should it be a grievance to have anything to do regarding past housing balances due? Or if your E D is sitting there writing letters, hey, you know, you need to clean up your yard, you need to, you know, you failed this part of the inspection. Well, make sure that if you're a tenant, that you're not in that same spot either. The purpose of your written policies, provide daily guidance to your housing staff and the performance of their routine activities. Make decisions more transparent to your staff and your tribal community. It's more defensible than an unwritten policy when challenges arise. Make sure all the housing staff do things the same way, promoting consistency and fairness, while also minimizing the potential for disputes or legal actions. You know, you can get sued. There should be insurance coverage for the board members, but you know, provide a foundation for sound management and supervision and provide a basis for your auditor justification. Your policies and procedures provide for that consistent and cohesive action on the part of your organization. They establish the broad parameters of a particular function of your T D H E or tribal housing division. It establishes a, a specific way a function is to be performed, it assigns responsibility, describes specific actions, forms, documents, report preparation. Sections two oh three to two oh seven of Nahazda, the statute and the implementing regulations at twenty-four CFR part one thousand and two CFR part two hundred require you adopt written policies in several areas. There's also program guidance goes, this one goes back twenty-three years, but it has not been updated yet. It's some of the required policies and statements under Nahazda. Although there are more that were added to that. Your policy areas, maintenance, inspection, useful life, uniform relocation assistance, conflict of interest, conflict of interest in admissions and contract administration, okay? Procurement, your total development cost, you have to build within, you know, the published T D C, we'll get into that later in the week. Finance and personnel. So your A and O policy, as I said yesterday, is probably the most important one that you have. A, a policy regarding rent, homebuyer payments charged, you know, for dwelling units assisted with your Nahazda funds. The methods in which you're gonna collect the rent, your homebuyer payments, your collection policy. That's described a lot within section two oh three A of the Nahazda statute. It would address the tribe or the T D H E's procedure for how and when and, you know, your tenants and your homebuyers make payments along with the requirements for the collection of those. Are you gonna have a late fee? You know, that's another decision that you, you need to make. Eligibility, admission and occupancy. Those policies addressing that, that's described at section two oh three D. Some of the things that should be addressed. Your eligibility addresses the three types of eligible participants, low-income, non-low-income, non-native, you know, whether they be essential or law enforcement. Your admission policies, the fair treatment of those applying for housing assistance, it should address all programs managed. Your provisions, your preferences, if you have any, it should address how conflicting requirements are addressed. If you're accepting maybe low-income housing tax credits, using them with Nahazda funds. Generally, the rule of thumb is you go by the stricter of the policy. Funding provided, you know, under a different federal program can prohibit discrimination based on race in accordance with fair housing. But Nahazda exempts us from that. So you have a conflict, you know, basically when you're using both types of that money. Occupancy policies, requirements for continued occupancy, grounds for termination of a housing lease or a sales contract that has to be within the lease and the policy. You should include a housing succession policy. You need to address that. If your tribal member is no longer in that household, whether it be a rental or definitely in, in the case of, of a homeownership property. I've seen and dealt with that from Washington State to Alaska to the Pueblos, you know, and some of our rancherias. When you're dealing with trust land, this house that I'm sitting in is a mortgage product. My husband is on the mortgage. He is native, but he's from my sister tribe. He cannot legally own. He can own the house. He can't own the land that the house sits on or any improvements to the land. We had to ask, you know, the tribe within the will, file it with the court and ask that he be, if I die before him, able to stay here for the rest of his natural life. And that the house would either be sold to a Bay Mills member or, you know, gifted to one of Bay Mills, you know, one of our children. You, you have to address that. That has to be, you know, within your policy somewhere. What, what are you gonna do there? The actions the housing entity will take if no successor has been designated by the homebuyer. Are you gonna pick them? You gonna buy the house? Is the housing authority gonna buy the house? You know, you need to have conversations about, you know, with your leadership. Incarceration attendants, sexual offenders, ban tribal members. My tribe bans tribal members if they have an offense. You know, they, they beat one of our women or, you know, there are certain things that will get them banned right off of this reservation. We have a list of banned tribal members. They cannot ban them from driving on the road, but they can ban them from putting their feet on the ground. So those are conversations that you might have to have or, or make sure that they are addressed somewhere within your policies. This is, you know, a, a sample of a, a life estate, you know, death of a homeowner. In the event of a death of a homeowner, the provisions of the following life, you know, estate code might apply, you know, and it depends, is there tribal member children in that household yet? In cases where there isn't, I've seen where tribes will say, you have ninety days, you know, we'll purchase this house from you. But you're not allowed to live here because you're not tribal. You can never legally own this, you know, so you, you have to make sure that you have somebody look at that. So tenant and homebuyer selection, there has to be criteria consistent with the purpose of providing housing for our low-income people. So tenant and homebuyer selection, there has to be criteria consistent with the purpose of providing housing for our low-income people. Reasonably related to program eligibility, the ability of that applicant to perform your obligations of your lease. To provide for a, a selection of tenant and homebuyers from a written waiting list, your waiting list also always has to be in writing. In accordance with the policies uh, and activities for that IHP. For whichever tribe is the grant beneficiary. Prompt, written notification. So when you write policy or you review policy. Is it business days? Is it calendar days? You should, what is prompt? You need to define that within your policy. I always encourage ten business days is prompt. Why? Because I'm trying to cover that bit between Thanksgiving and, you know, our Christmas and New Years, you know, so. You don't, if something comes in during that time period, you don't break your own rule. And I always try to go with business days because of holidays. Uh, management and maintenance policies, you're gonna have to policies addressing your management, maintenance of housing assisted with those Nahazda funds, that's addressed to two oh three of the statute. Uh, personnel policies, grievance policies, okay? You have to have three set of grievance policies. You have to have a grievance policy for personnel. You have a tab, a grievance policy for tenants, and you have to have a grievance policy for Indian preference. Um, capitalization, disposition. That was the one thing I didn't have a capitalization policy. And I had asked for someone to come in before my HUD monitoring. And they didn't find it. And I'm like, that was the only thing that I got a finding for. I didn't have it, and I'm like, why didn't you find this, you know? I wanted to walk away with nothing, but little do I know, they, they always try to find something to strengthen your program and prove that you were there. So, fiscal and financial management refer to two CFR part two hundred, okay? Anything finance-related, audit-related, procurement-related is all found under two CFR part two hundred. That's the only document not written just for us, so it's the hardest one for me as a housing person to read. But the tribe, it should mirror your tribes. Your procurement policy could mirror the tribes. Um, although Nahazda allows us a little bit more flexibility if it's Nahazda money being used um, to have higher thresholds. Your fiscal management and internal controls policy is required by two hundred three oh two. And you can refer to the one thousand twenty-six for administrative requirements for Nahazda-specific requirements. So procurement and contract uh, administration, you can read about that at one thousand twenty-six and two CFR three seventeen through three twenty-six. Make sure you have a good procurement policy. Make sure, because there, I, I used an example yesterday, we could have a threshold of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars allowed by law. And if your threshold is seventy-five thousand dollars and one of your maintenance staff or, you know, your ED go out and they make a purchase at a hundred thousand. They didn't break the federal threshold. They broke your own personnel policy or your own procurement policy. And you will get just as much trouble for doing that. Um, so, make sure that you have adequate, you know, policies and that you're following those also. So you have to follow the tribal policy as well as the, you know, um. Policy that's found through two CFR, two CFR two hundred. So the regulations at three eighteen also requires grantees and sub-grantees to maintain a written code of standards of conduct. Governing the performance of employees engaged in the award of the administration of contracts, okay? I have, when we get to that portion this week, I have language in there that will cover you. Um, if you put that in your documents. Um, it gives you, cause you know, some of the possible penalties, basically. Because they wanna make sure that somebody's paying attention to that. Your tribal and Indian preference incorporated into your procurement policy. Or it could be a separate policy. We are subject to seven B of the Indian Self-Determination and Education Assistance Act. And it requires recipients to have policies consistent with those sections. One thousand fifty-four on Indian preference complaint procedures require that tribal policies meet or exceed the requirements under that citation. So when I get to, and I will talk about that during the week, you can't shorten the timeframes. I review a lot of tribes' policies to make sure that they're compliant, to make sure that they have all of them. And one of my clients tried shortening, I think from twenty days to fourteen, and HUD says, no, no, no. You can lengthen it, but you cannot shorten that time under Indian preference, so. Don't try to shorten the amount. So, real property acquisition, relocation. We are subject to real property acquisition and relocation policies under one thousand fourteen and then forty-nine CFR part twenty-four. Okay, um, the regulations respectively require grantees to develop minimum standards for our appraisals that we have done and our appraisers that are doing them. Um, and we are not allowed to use Nahazda funds and purchase land over fair market value, okay? Don't do that, you'll get in trouble. So, real property acquisition, relocation, we have to follow relocation and real property acquisition regulations set out at one thousand fourteen if we have to relocate tenants and homebuyers. And if we are acquiring real property. Under section seven oh two of Nahazda, no lease of a restricted allotment or townsite land shall exceed fifty years. You will still need to develop minimum standards for appraisals as well as criteria for determining the minimum qualification of the appraisers that you are utilizing if you're expending Nahazda funds. Cash management. Falls under two hundred three oh two, requires all the grant recipients to establish a cash management procedure. It's the process of managing the cash flow to optimize the use of funds. When two hundred, two CFR two hundred was adopted, it did away with like eight different policies under finance that all started with A. Um, if any of your policies start with A slash, there, there need to be rewritten and you have to go back to two CFR two hundred, um, to make sure that they are up to date, okay? So, a, a cash management policy sample, you know, your tribe or TDHE recognizes the importance of cash management to ensure sufficient funds to pay for the expenses of operating housing program. Your finance director shall be responsible for monitoring the daily cash flow balances of all cash funds, including your investments. On a monthly basis, the finance director shall provide a report that shows the cash position from all sources that are accounted for in your cash accounts, investment accounts, bank investment statements. And your tribe THE's cash and investment funds may be from a variety of sources such as Nahazda IHBG funds, non-restricted funds, unused donations and program income. The finance director shall be responsible for providing monthly reports to the executive director to include book, cash and investment position reports, cash flow projections for the following month. Investment statements, um, from your depository or broker that shows the activities of your accounts. Amounts deposited, withdrawn, investment revenues, fees, gains, losses on investment. One of the reasons this particular policy was put into place. When the finance is done by somebody that works for the tribe, okay? Um, not within the housing entity or the TDHE itself. Um, there's a lot of slippage in those areas. Your finance person usually is not very well-versed on some of the, the laws, um, pertaining to the use of Nahazda funds. And they don't know the figures oftentimes that we need for our IHP and our APR preparation. And they don't need, you know, um, I've seen a lot of findings as a result of the finance position. And, and it usually happens when there are tribal department and finance is done by the tribe. Um, it's really, really important that your finance person be trained, um, on the needs of the Nahazda finance component, okay? It, it will really help in the long run with findings and with late IHP and APR preparations because they, your ED needs those figures. The other component is it's really hard sometimes, depending on where the cash goes to for rent payment, for your ED to do their job if they're not getting actual day-to-day figures, to know when rent is being received. They can't go, and, you know, make sure that the tenants are making timely payments, so. That's an area where the, it's gonna need some special oversight sometimes. So, if at any time your finance director finds, you know, the tribe or TDHE in a potential cash deficiency, the council or the board and the ED should be notified immediately. Any cost, you know, allocable to any particular federal award may not be charged to another federal award to overcome a fund deficiency. You know, you can't take money from the IHBG fund and pay something for ICBG. You know, that, they're both HUD accounts, but they're not, they're not the same. And, and they can't be intermingled, a- and that happens sometimes. So, um, just be very, very aware if you're under that type of a situation. Your travel, the regulations state that the recipient should comply with the requirements and the standards found at two CFR. Uh, two hundred four seventy-four require grantees use federal travel standards in the absence of a local governmental unit travel policy. So your housing entity may use your tribe's adopted policy. In the absence of using your tribes, we have to use GSA, okay? Drug-free workplace, you know, there's certifications that we, you know, have, um, published statements notifying employees of a drug-free workplace, uh, requirement. Uh, provide each employee engaged in the performance of work under your block grant, a copy of the written statement. You know, there's the, the written statement, a, a sample one. As described within the Drug-Free Workplace Act, it's a policy to provide a drug-free workplace. You know, those are other areas that as Board of Commissioners, you can look at, um, having discussions. You, are you gonna have your maintenance, your carpenter, people like that? Do you need them to let you know if they're on a prescription drug that could put them in danger using, you know, some of the equipment that they use? Um, you might think about that. Uh, driving, you know, plow equipment, things like that, loaders, front-end loaders, um, certain, you know, things like that. Do you require them to let you know if they get a, a driving offense? Do they have to come in and, you know, is it required? If they get a drunk driving, they definitely should be in somebody's office, you know, that following Monday, telling them what happened. Um, but your policies are gonna need to reflect that also, okay? So, there's lots of different policies, you know, their, their usage of the internet. Are they supposed to be, you know, replying on behalf of the housing authority on Facebook? You know, um, those are all different places where you probably need to look at your policies and see if they a- address certain things. So additional policies, procedure, standards are also required under certain circumstances. Um, records and information management. You shall apply the Uniform Guidance Rules for the Records, including financial. Uh, information which meet legal standards for best practices, uh, effective records, information management for existing records and yet to be created records shall apply to your employees, your contractors who generate information for your tribe or TDHE. You need to ensure the control of all of the information regardless of that media form. Your records need to be retained in accordance with legal, business, federal, state, local government program requirements. They have to be maintained and stored in a manner that is secure and accessible through the retention period. You do, you know, for example, any type of, uh, drug records or, uh, FBI criminal backgrounds. Those have to be in a locked area separate from those other files. You definitely need control over your tenant files and who can see those. Um, and conversations about who you, what you can discuss about your tenants with whom. Um, appropriate safeguards in place against illegal access, removal, loss, destruction of your records and information. Disposal of records and information performed in accordance with your records retention schedule. Uh, in addition, uh, that information for that retention policy should comply with Nahazda program requirements on records management in accordance of one thousand five fifty-two. All of our records, you know, are supposed to be kept for a minimum of, um, three years. So litigation, claims, negotiations, anything that, uh, has started before the expiration of that three-year period. Um, you have to then retain those records until the completion of that accident and, and a resolution for any issue which arise above that. You know, so until the end of the regular three pe- year period or whatever is later. Investment and internal control, you need a policy, the guidance is at twenty twenty-five oh five. If you should be, uh, an investment tribe. Our housing standards, we're gonna talk about that later in the week. The guidance is the total development cost, uh, twenty twenty-four twenty-eight. We can only build moderate housing, so we are capped by how much we can spend um, on our housing that we build or provide. It doesn't matter if the tribe kicks in the rest of the money. It doesn't matter where that money comes from. It has to stay within that threshold. There's further guidance, you know, uh, through two hundred three eighteen on procurement procedures, conflict of interest and procurement, settlement of any procurement contractual or administrative. Um, there's our different guidance documents that you can look for for travel, for drug-free, for overarching administrative, for complaints and issues stemming from Indian preference, for conflict of interest. And then section one oh one of Nahazda statute allows us to adopt a tribal in uh, preference in employment and contracting. The tribal employment and contract preference laws, um, are, are addressed there, and that is also in your documents. Um, and these are Indian and tribal preference, um, areas that, that you can read through. Tribal preference, Indian preference, things like that. So, the policies, you know, they are approved by your governing oversight po- policy. Could be the Board of Commissioners, could be the Tribal Council, depends on how you're set up. They outline the courses of action to comply with our complex laws and rules. They ensure consistent, uniform application of standard procedures and processes by the staff. They can be amended to reflect changes. It's a formal record of approved policies and they, they should be maintained. They should be public and copies provided among, you know, uh, upon request. Anybody should be able to come in and ask for your conflict of interest policy, for your A and O policy. Um, any of that. Um, but you have to have proof that they were adopted, so you need that resolution showing that they were adopted. And I realize that I'm getting close to running a little late. I'll try to speed up as much as I can. Signed acknowledgements is proof policies and procedures were communicated to your stakeholders, your leases, your users. Combine acknowledgement statements with handbook disclaimers for additional protection. Allow your attorneys to review and approve acknowledgements, so. The, the top one, um, has to do with like a personnel policy. Receive a copy of this handbook policy procedure. I understand it's my obligation to read and understand the material, to abide by the rules established by the organization. I understand that I'm governed by these policies and procedures and that the organization can change them at will. You might also say that you're an at-will employer. Um, this one is for the tenant handbook. I always put two copies with a date and a signature lines on them. Um, I have them sign them and I tear one out and put it in their file. One stays with the book that they walk out the door with. Um, I've received the tenant handbook, which outlines my obligations and privileges as a tenant. I, uh, agree to familiarize myself with the contents of this book, seek clarification of any item that I do not understand. I agree to comply with the standards and rules outlined within that document. So, if your policies are undated or unapproved, they're useless. They need proof of adoption of those policies. And as somebody who goes in and works with policies all over, there is nothing more disheartening than somebody handing you something that says draft or worship when you work on it for a week, and then they said, hey, I found another one we adopted four years later. You are not gonna make a happy camper out of your auditor or your HUD monitoring people if you do that. So you should have a, a list of the policies that you need, that you have, and proof of adoption. And they should be all in one place. You can make all the copies you want from that, but keep that with proof of adoption with your original ones, all put within a depository. Okay, if they're not fully prepared or updated, your housing program could be relying on obsolete, outdated, incorrect information in the management of your IHBG-funded activities. You could inadvertently be in non-compliance. You are basically swearing to when you basically swearing to when you, um, accept your money. When you, if you read your I H P and you read your A P R, saying that you've got all of these policies in effect. Including rents charged, methods which the homebuyer payments are determined. Um, policies are in effect, uh, governing the management and maintenance of my housing. I mean, you're certifying to a whole bunch of these, um. Read your I H P and A P R. So have that depository, review your policies and procedures, make sure they're compliant with the most current regulations. If they're quoting it, make sure that that's the most up-to-date one. You know, the, the ones that you've got, the thirty-one or whatever that are listed here are the most up-to-date. Um, they change, you know, you can go onto the Code Talk website and see, is there any more? And you can actually used to be able to Google the button, you, you know, eh, the Google button. Used to be able to go into the search button and search by subject, and it would bring up everything that pertained to that. Have a unified binder or another depository which clearly, you know, um, labels the policies required under Nahazda. Dated with reference showing the approval of the governing body. So your policy versus practice, your official policy is the written policy adopted by the Oversight Board. The actual practice is what the staff really do with their various situations. An effective policy is one that was going to work based on the procedures to implement that procedure. If you read your policies and you're not doing it, and take it out, you'll get sued. If you have a policy, you know, um, that you won't have abandoned unlicensed, unregistered, uninsured cars. And somebody gets caught in a trunk or, or, you know, the blocks fall down on somebody, the first thing they're going to do is read your policy. Then they're going to stoke on your properties and count how many would fall under that. And if you've got two or three of them, you've lost your case, you know, so take it out. Or adhere to your policy and enforce it, you know, so be careful there. Don't adopt a policy you're not going to enforce. One of my times in Oklahoma, I thought, yep, this is an inoperable vehicle on housing property. And it doesn't have valid plates or insurance, you know, because that's what we tried to do. You know, we've all got ResDogs, we've all got junk cars, it seems like, you know, so that's how you kind of fix that. So this is also in your reference material, it's some of the required policies you can have with proof of adoption, something to get you on your way to making sure that you have adequate policies. So this next section, um, and I do realize I'm running a little late, is the Indian Housing Plan. Uh, we're going to get into that in gems, and then we'll get into the performance report self-monitoring tomorrow. Um, it gives you a, an overview of the plan that you have to submit on, um, a yearly basis, your I H P is, this is the money I got, this is what I'm going to do with this, um, money this year. It's a statutory requirement under one oh-two and one oh-three of the Nahazda statute, that's where you would read about that. Um, to receive your funds under Nahazda, that I H P and A P R has to be submitted to HUD annually and approved. Um, they have to make sure that it is compliant. Again, it's going to ask you to certify that you've got all of these policies in place. Um, you're going to need tribal certifications of, you know, your authorized officials. Sometimes you can um, delegate the T D H E to submit an I H P or an amendment on behalf of the tribe without prior review of the tribe. Now, I had that, but you know, um, a lot of housing authorities don't. The key components, you know, um, the guidance for this is in your reference materials. It's two thousand eighteen oh-two and it talks about Epic. We no longer use Epic, but they have not updated the guidance, okay? We go under gems now and we'll address that, um. But the rules to how you do it are still under that particular guidance. So your I H P is your Indian Housing Plan, it's required by HUD in order to receive the funds, it's a roadmap. Hopefully to respond to your housing needs, spells out how you intend to use your funds that you received during that year. Your activities, um, plus your money basically equal your budget, and that, that'll be your I H P for the year. Don't put something in there year after year after year that you're not doing, because they judge it on the A P R side. Bring it back down or remove it, you can always amend your I H P at any time. The recipient submits the I H P A P R to the tribe or your tribally designated housing entity. Uh, if your T D H E has been designated by more than one tribe, i- if you're an Umbrella Tribe or Rancheria or Pueblo, um, or a village up in Alaska, you can submit a separate I H P for each, or you can do a single I H P for all tribes within your jurisdiction. Make sure you include the tribal certifications though. You submit seventy-five days that I H P prior to the beginning of your program year. It's supposed to be an effective management tool, allows you to have your I H P in place at the start of your program year. And failure to submit that in time can make no money for the year. If our congressional monies are actually delayed. Uh, if there's a program year estimate available, you base your I H P on that estimate. Okay, that's given out on the formula response form which you get online, that's usually available June first, okay? Uh, you would then revise your I H P when you find out the real number. You revise it internally, you don't have to send it back out again, okay? But you have to update the A P R to include your actual amount. So that's how you kind of deal with not a really solid number. Extensions can be granted under exceptional circumstances, they cannot, you know, HUD cannot waive that due date outside of the statutory limit. You can request a waiver of the deadline anytime before or after the uh, I H P is due to be submitted. They can only extend that for ninety days. And at that ninety-day line, you lose your money for the year, okay? You start that clock ticking, um. Make sure that you have on a board somewhere when your I H P and your A P R is due, okay? You can use your monies to have somebody do that for you. But if you're ever in a situation where you lose your E D or you lose a person that usually prepares us on your behalf, call HUD. They'll tell you, you know, take last year's and enter it like that and we'll start to fix it. They don't want you to lose your money, they will find a way to walk you through there a- and make sure that you don't do that, you know, they're good, they're good for that. So late appropriations, if they're delayed, you know, you can sometimes access interim funding after a notice has been published by HUD. Um, if you have an approved I H P and you don't have a lot of money in your E L O X account, okay? Um, you call your HUD office, you ask them if it's available. Um, they'll tell you to put a, put it in writing, who to send it to, um, and, um, your authorizing official has to submit a written request to HUD, but you can do that. Our smaller housing authorities that don't have big rent rolls, don't have a lot of money in locks, sometimes will, you know, need to do that. The other important part. We get our money through E L O X, okay, um, over the computer. You put it in and it's in your bank account within three days. The majority of our housing entities do this on a reimbursement basis, the reason being we have three days from the time that hits our bank to spend that money. Um, that's why we do it, you know, and if we ask for it on a Thursday, it could be sitting in there Monday and that clock's already ticked away. Um, you got to be careful. Uh, that's why the majority of our tribes do that on a reimbursement basis. You have to disperse the payment within three days of receipt of that money into your bank account, and they're fast. So we utilize now what they call gems, it's a grants evaluation and management system. It doesn't change, you know, basically much except for our four twenty-fives. Our four twenty-fives used to have to be quarterly, okay? Um, now unless you're an investment tribe, you only do your four twenty-fives once a year. Now, this has bit some of our smaller housing authorities where the accounting is not done within the housing entity. It's a lot easier to get the adequate figure if you've got quarterly four twenty-fives. So sometimes we will work with them and say, why don't you do a four twenty-five quarterly anyway and just file it away? Um, so we can, you know, go back to and find our, any errors if there are any, uh, a, a little quicker, okay? So, um, we now, like I said, unless you're an investment tribe, only have to do those on a yearly basis. This is a notification talking about everybody having to use gems. It is a, a easier plate way for everybody to find all of our information at once, okay? They built this so we could report to Congress how we were doing spending our money. Um, these are active links in here to the website if you want to, you know, peruse that. Uh, some of the self-registrations, logins, different things like that. Um, it came upon, you know, uh, the Dear Tribal Leader Letter section in August of twenty twenty-three. Um. The gems requirement, we all have to use it now, um. It will retain all submitted documents for future reference by grantees and own app staff, so everybody can get anything that's ever been submitted. All the stuff that was uh, transferred to Epic is going to get transferred into gems, um, so that, you know, you can utilize that. There's a registration portal, uh, signature ad- adestation for you and information and resources, there's a link to the user guide also, um, if you want to find out more about that. Um, and then the guidance saying that we basically only have to do the four twenty-fives quarterly. They're going to continue to release different parts to gems. And we will be notified of the additional functions and requirements, but we will be required to utilize that. Okay, so, um, requesting HUD approval via email or post, if you should be one of the tribes that have inadequate email service or, 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 excuse me, fax, internet, things like that, you can submit them a, a different way. Um, I don't know of any that are like that yet, but I've been in some areas where there's not much. Um, if you have questions regarding that, you can ask through this link, anything to do with gems, okay? Sorry that I ran you late. Thirteen minutes, I apologize, please come back tomorrow. Um, it was really good and I'm glad that you joined us and hopefully you learned something. Um, Brooke will be in the background, she's going to need, um, a little bit of information from me if she can.
Yes, thank you so much, Cheryl. An incredible day two of five, I hope everybody comes back for three, four, and five, uh, the rest of this week. Um, I did put the link to the webinar feedback survey into the chat. Um, it is a different feedback survey each day of the week, um, they're anonymous, so you don't have to worry about your name or your email being attached. Uh, it takes about three minutes to complete, lets us know what's working, what we can improve upon. And we do share the feedback with our instructors. Um, I didn't get any feedback surveys yesterday for day one, so it'd be really, really lovely to get some for day two, folks. And like I said before, we hope you can join us for day three, uh, same time, same place, so that's two P M Eastern, one P M Central, twelve P M Mountain, eleven A M Pacific, and ten A M Alaska, that'll be day three tomorrow on Wednesday. And you can check out, um, the recording of this as well as our other recorded, um, webinars on our YouTube archive. Um, they're also going to be available in the courses section underneath this course. So if you need to go back and review anything, you'll be able to do that once we post them. We hope you can check out our other upcoming training events, we post about them to our various social media. We're on Facebook, Instagram, LinkedIn, and Twitter. And if you are a podcast listener, the Native Learning Center has its own in-house produced podcast, the Hope a Thing and Native American Podcast. You can listen to that wherever you listen to your podcasts. But that is all we have for you today, folks. Um, again, hope to see you for the rest of the week for day three, four, and five. Um, and if you missed day one, I'm going to post the recording into the courses section, um, right after I get off here. Um, so I'm going to go ahead and turn off the recording, thank you everybody for coming. Thank you, Cheryl, for.